Whenever you're ready, Maureen. Okay. Good evening and welcome everyone to the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission. This is, my name is Joan Beely and I'm the Chairwoman for the Planning and Zoning Commission. This meeting may be attended a person or by remote video or telephone conference. Zoom conference access information was provided by the, to the commission members, applicants and other interested persons to participate and was noticed on the agenda posted on the town website. For all those attending, I would like you to ask you to mute yourselves if you are able to do so, so that we will not pick up any background noise. I have two very important reminders. First, every time you speak, you must state your name and title for the record. Second, we must be careful not to speak over each other so that everyone who is listening can hear what's being said and we have a clear record. For this reason, as necessary, when it comes time for the commission members to comment and ask, ask questions about a particular agenda item before any action is taken and then to vote on that agenda item. Our planner, Maureen Juicy, will call for the roll as needed. Also, the regular meeting is being recorded and the recording will be posted on the town's website. I'm now going to ask Maureen to take attendance by calling the roll. Thank you.
John Michael Bryan.
Excuse.
George Miller.
Present.
Diane Joycey.
Here.
Brian Rogan.
Here.
Excused.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here. Thank you, Maureen. And for the record, because John Michael is excused this evening, I'll ask Andrew Lagnani, can you please be seated in his stead? And for Steve Wulman, I'm going to turn to Steve Biella. And would you please be seated? Peter, just hang in there with us in case one of us steps back or steps down, we'll be calling on you. So thank you for being in attendance. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And first up is the review of the minutes for August 5th, which is 2021. It's the regular meeting. And has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? And are there corrections? None noted. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any, okay, Mr. Lagnani, questioner Lagnani, can I please ask you for your concern?
Yes. In the minutes for the 19th, I was not present and it has me down listed as present.
Oh, okay.
Or, and so I just request that it be put in underneath excused.
Okay, so moving you from the present for the meeting to be excused, okay. Any other corrections that anyone saw? So I'll move the motion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
George? I couldn't hear George's vote.
I'm sorry, I'm good, fine.
Alrighty, and anyone opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, abstain. Mr. Lagnani and Mr. Rogan for the record abstains. Thank you. All right, moving on to the schedule of public hearings. The proposed amendment by Maureen, of Maureen Juicy, AICP Acting Town Planner, to amend XB4F of the Berlin Planning and Zoning Regulation. The suggested date is today, September 2nd, 2021. Are we opening this? The agenda we have is different. Okay, all right. Let me go. Sorry. My apologies. Okay, let me go back. And we're still talking about scheduling a public hearing, proposed a new amendment to Section 11C1I, excuse me, one of the Berlin zoning regulations concerning greenhouses. This is Attorney Brad N. Monchell Shine. And the suggested date is October 7th. This sounds better.
Phew, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing October 7th, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Joycey. Do we have a second?
Second, Commissioner Lagnani.
Okay, thank you. And for the discussion, all those in favor? Aye. George?
Aye.
Thank you. Anyone opposed? So moved. Onto new business, special event application, Mary Corrigan, on behalf of St. Paul's Church for its annual parish picnic, St. Paul's Church, 4667 Alling Street. Do we have anyone here to represent? Okay, yes, come on down. Are you Mary Corrigan? Are you Ms. Corrigan? All right, terrific. If you could just come to the podium here. So as we have our discussion, it'll be recorded, just state your name and address for the record and we'll ask, oh, over here in the corner. Yeah, because we want the audience to be able to see you as well. All right, thank you.
Mary Corrigan, my address is 137 Bell Street in Middletown, Connecticut.
Okay. And you're representing?
I am representing the St. Paul's Parish.
Okay.
Requesting the permit for annual picnic.
Okay. So this is an annual picnic for you folks?
Yes.
Does it take place in the church or can you tell us something?
It's going to take place on the parish green. We're doing it a little different this year. Instead of a Saturday, we are going to have a 12 o'clock mass on the parish green with the picnic immediately following. It should be between 1:00 and we hope to be done by about 6:00 PM.
Band live music? Will there be dancing?
No, we got hot dogs and hamburgers.
This is good.
Chips, potato salad coleslaw, cookies, games for the kids.
And this is all going to be?
It's all on the parish green. We'll be using with limited basis, the school cafeteria and gym for some of the setup, but the majority of the picnic, whether providing, will be on the parish green.
Okay. It's, this is a, an annual event for you. How many years have you guys been doing this?
Years. Quite a few. It's changed over the, the same group of people have been doing it for about six or seven years, but we've done it in the past as well. We used to do it in the church parking lot.
I heard really good things about that.
It's a fun event. We had up to 500 or 600 people and we're hoping to have 300 this year. Not sure what COVID, what's going to happen.
Wonderful.
We will have a tent providing about 300 people seating, tables and chairs.
Okay. Maureen, do we have any concerns from staff?
These are concerns on that the tent be permitted to the building department and receive the proper inspections fire retardant tent, et cetera. Those are all the fire marshals comments. And that the temporary food permit is required from the Central Connecticut Public Station.
Okay.
They are going through the police department for the block party request form and the closure. And they're also going to be applying to the town council for fee waivers.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
All right. Okay.
For the event. With zoning has not had, I believe it's like 2016, maybe that the commission has been approving this event. Maybe longer than that, maybe other church event. And I'm not recalling any zoning violations or concerns that have been reported for the event.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Maureen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I was going to ask. All right, so we have a motion, a motion jumped by, obviously by Mr. Zigma.
I will second.
Okay, we have a second, okay, for the discussion. Is there any commission members either zooming in or in person? Anyone who has any other questions of the applicant? Hearing none, listen with the motion. So all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And George, how are we doing?
He's disappeared.
I know.
We might have lost him.
Did we lose George?
Did you kick anyone?
Okay, for the record then, I'll ask Mr. Zaraboza to cast a vote for Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, hopefully technical difficulty will be sorted out at his end. All right, where am I? Okay, next up is the.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so next up is the site plan amendment application of Kokomo Brothers Associated LLC for proposals of Phase 2 and 3 of a previously submitted master plan for a comprehensive warehousing facility at 166 Old Brickyard Lane. That's the, also the address of 166 to 212 Old Brickyard Lane. I hope I'm reading from the right agenda. Okay. Good evening. George is back with us, okay. Thank you, George. No, no problem. We had Peter Zaraboza here to cast a vote in your stead.
Sorry.
Right. Okay, what do we have?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, my name is David Carson. I'm one of the principals of the OCC Group with offices in Cheshire, representing the applicant. As the application statement was made, we are here for a site plan amendment for the approval of the second and third phase of an overall plan, where the first phase, which is a 17,000 square foot warehouse building, which has just been built, was approved as Phase 1 with a master plan showing the, a proposed Phase 2 and 3 to encompass the entire 3.5 acres. The, as I said, the first phase is completed as far as I know. I think it's actually even occupied. The, with the, with the first phase, there is an existing house office structure that's here, which will, which is scheduled to come down once the second phases is done. So I can give you an idea, a better idea of what's happening here in sequence is, as I said, this building is built, there's an existing structure right here. It's a, it's a house office building. There is another house office building over here plus an existing garage structure on the site. As part of the approval for the first phase, this particular building was to stay and the building over here, which was essentially a house, was to be demolished. That house has been demolished. This is still here. This is scheduled to remain with the building of Phase 2, which is an 8,000 square foot warehouse building, which calls for building that, tearing down the next structure, another house office building, until ultimately we get to Phase 3, at which time the existing house that's here is gone. The existing house that's already been torn down is gone and the house at the end is gone. All the existing residential structures will ultimately be torn down as part of the overall master plan. The, the existing building, the loading docks and everything are at the southerly, southerly end of the site for both Phase 2 and Phase 3. The loading docks will be at the northerly end of the site. So there's no conflict in truck traffic. The, the parking in between Phase 1 and Phase 2, this basically will be, be shared by all three buildings with, Phase 1 has additional parking over here, larger structure, more parking required. I believe there's a requirement for 42 spaces, if memory holds true, and I believe we show 52. It appears that the plans have been reviewed by all departments. There was recent comments from the town engineer, which, which we addressed. And then there was a, a subsequent comment from him with regard to coordinating a stormwater crossing of the existing water main in the road here, coordinating that with Kensington Fire District when we get there, just to make sure there's clearance between the pipes.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Just, so, for clarity's sake here. So looking at the maps that you provided to us, I just want to make sure. So you said that Phase 1 is basically under construction well on the way, if not, the client has already moved in.
Yes.
Existing building, hold on. 196, number 204, 212. Those three houses plus an existing garage above 204, are those all going to be raised? Those three?
Ultimately, there's three houses.
Yeah.
That will be raised. One has already been raised.
All right.
Which was, which was part of the approval of the, the first phase.
Was that number 204, the one in the middle, so to speak?
I've got them on the big screen right now too. That's 204.
Okay, yeah.
That one's gone. That one's.
Okay. Okay.
Still exists. This that was built presumably as a residence, but has held offices for some time. It's jail, surveilling and it's in office since I got here. That is still existing and set to be demolished. And this structure here, which was the two units.
Yeah, that's.
Converted is also to be demolished with the Phase 3.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So the only one that's gone right now is the one in the middle, 204.
Yeah.
But the other two, 212 and 198 or 6666, the number.
The one at the top will go with Phase 2. That'll be demolished as far as Phase 2, the one that's all the way up. Yes.
All right.
The call is that way up here.
Yep.
In case anybody needs orientation as to how they're looking.
Okay. So basically, all those will be raised.
Yes, that's correct.
Phase 2, which is what we're talking about right?
Two, 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 excuse me, two, two will be gone with Phase 2. The third one will be gone when they build Phase 3.
Okay, alrighty. All right, so I didn't mean to break your presentation.
Nope.
I was staying pace with you, so.
I, I believe I'm completed.
Okay.
Would be happy to answer any specific questions the commission may have.
Okay. So your request for this evening then is for, you're asking for a continuation on this?
We're asking for approval of a site plan amendment for both Phase 2 and 3, the build out of the, of the site.
I just give the commission.
Absolutely.
Maureen, is there something that you can?
Give the commission a little bit of overview. Right now, you'll recall that a couple months ago, the Phase 1 building, and I changed the screen view so that that building is actually on the plan.
Okay.
Building over to the right.
Yes.
Which way are we looking?
I know.
And that one was, that's the new Phase 1 construction that was occupied with the temporary certificate of occupancy as the owner is going through eviction proceedings that are, have been held up with the inability for evictions to go through with the court system.
Oh, yeah.
On the building that was to be converted to a caretaker's unit and an office that's immediately adjacent to Phase 1. Then, and then we have the occupancy issue with the use that's in the contract, the commercial garage that was Grady's Garage. They have also proceeded with eviction proceedings there. His lease was to be up on August 31st is what we were, the information we were provided. And it doesn't appear to be vacant, although no one answered when I went there. Visited the site today, no one answered at that site. The residential unit that, it was the residential eviction near the Phase 1 building that did have an occupant inside who said he's not allowed to be removed. That unit for sure. We are, we did get documentation that I believe was in your packet and I got another one today. Yeah, on Thursday, that says that coast to coast, which is from the owner of the property, Thomas Kokomo. We didn't, this didn't get copied to you because I just quite forget.
That's okay.
Quite late today. He was coast to coast, which is the, in the garage building. Alex was served in hand on Monday with the complaint, return date is 9/15, second phase of eviction. Previous to that, I believe you guys have the emails that indicate the service of the eviction notices on both of them.
Yeah.
Earlier in August. And there being their proceeding. The, the building of Phase 2 and Phase 3 as the dwellings are, as the buildings that were built as dwellings are demolished, brings the building, the whole site more into compliance with the zone, with the PI zone. However, we do still have those outstanding violations which are subject to zoning. We're also proceeding with zoning violations on the property, both the owners and the tenants with notice that they are violating zoning regulations and your previous approval of the non-occupancy.
Yeah.
Plans do bring it, the property into compliance if they come to fruition. If you so choose to approve the, I have, you'll see in my staff report, there are a couple of conditions of approval that I am suggesting that relate to those occupancy, for instance, whether it be at building permit or at what stage the zoning officer not issue any permit or zoning approval for those permits until the time that those properties are vacant. Or that's suggestion, the condition. Well, or, you know, at your own pleasure. And the second thing, the second most notable thing, that if, as the buildings each become vacant, that no new tenancy is permitted, regardless of whether that building is set to be immediately demolished or demolished in the next phase or at any time. Be allowed to, the owner not be allowed to reoccupy those buildings.
Okay. Thank you, Maureen. Do we have any questions from the commission? Yes, Tim?
If I remember correctly, we had the violations on this property and you're saying that the violations have not been taken care of?
But the violations, just so that I understand, the violations exist with the occupancy of the building that?
Well, the occupancy was one of them, the other one was the other violations on the property of.
But the, you mean the cleanup?
Vehicles and cleanup and stuff like that.
Well, that was with Phase 1, I believe.
No, no.
No, I believe that Mr. Zigma is talking about the garage building at the far
Yes.
side of the site.
Yes.
We observed, myself and the previous zoning officer, Adam, observed that site being significantly cleaned up by the owners of the property and the tenant appears to have replaced some of the items and not completed clearing out the items that belong to him. So you have that conflict between what the landlord can remove and what the tenant can refuse to have removed. We've had a couple of meetings with council, the owner's council, myself and the owner with regard to the process and what they are doing in order to action and that's where the emails came in, that they were to provide with to us the, their actions that they were actively seeking eviction process through the courts.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, we, we didn't address basically the occupancy of the residential because we knew the restrictions of eviction of them. But we did say that any other zoning issues has to be corrected before we. But we did say that any other zoning issues has to be corrected before we approve anything. And I still feel that way. Then the, if I remember correctly, and you can correct me, the garage in the left there was supposed to be an antique car restoration place. It was not, that wasn't done. And when that was approved, and there's a still zoning violations on that piece, which is part of the whole project, you know. So, you know, until those are improved and, and, and done, I, you know, the project itself, I don't have a problem with the project because it's, let's go improve the area there. Once these buildings are built and the houses are down, everything else. We can't address the tenant because the eviction problem, state, state, well, federal even. But we can address the, the issues that are on the property. And that's, I think.
Yeah, well, no.
You know, and, and once those zoning violations are gone, as far as I'm concerned, bring it back and, okay. You know.
Anyone else who wants to address the commission regarding this application? George, I know you're online. I just want to make sure you have a chance to chime in if you need to.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Millard. I concur with, with Tim. I think, you know, it's like, get, get the stuff that was promised done, and then let's move forward. That was my take also.
Okay, I don't know if everyone heard, but George basically said that he agreed with Commissioner Zigmont, and that thing should be done in order to move forward. And so he was supporting Mr. Zigmont's opinion.
Chairman.
Yes.
Really. I too support Commissioner Zigmont and Commissioner Millard's ideas.
Ms. Chairman, can I address?
Yes, sure.
For the record. My name is Thomas Kokomo, and I live at One Fitzwilliam Park in Farmington, and I have an office here in Berlin at 365 New Britain Road. And I'd like to bring you up to speed as well as Maureen did on this project and the tenants. And, and I appreciate with Mr. Zigmont's concerns and Mr. Leeagnani's concerns. And I heard, well, I believe I heard Mr. Millard say the same, but I heard him say the term, use the term promised. And there is a zoning violation on, on that property. I, let's call, the garage property is 212 Old Brickyard Lane. And it, as Mr. Zigmont stated, that zoning violation was in effect probably eight years or so when Mr. Grady, who was the tenant at the time, tried to take his antique car collection or whatever, or antique car company and try to convert it into doing more use. And, and ultimately, he was denied, and he moved out. But he, what he did was he sold his practice, his, his car, car restoration business to the next gentleman, who worked supposedly with Merrick for a while, the former planner, to try to get something approved there. Ultimately, he never did. And, and I did have, and this goes back to 2017, the first phase of this subdivision to be approved. I've been trying to, to work with him from about 2018, this, this gentleman at Coast to Coast, to get him in compliance. I never made promises to get him in compliance, but I've done everything in my power. And, and, and what that means is doing is, is legal action. And inevitably, the legal action will run its course and will have a, we will have a vacant parcel there. And I'm not in support of what he's doing. I, to the extent that, as Maureen stated, my brother and I went to the property and physically with six other people moved things that did not belong to me until the police came and told me to get off of our property because he was the tenant, and it was a civil matter. And if I took anything else off the property, we would be arrested. So I've done everything in my power. My company's done everything in our power. All I, we would like to do is to run concurrently. And I appreciate that maybe that, that this commission wants it in conformance. We as, we as applicants want it in zoning compliance. We are at the mercy of the court system, not because we're not doing what we're, we're not doing, running it, allowing, we're allowing it to run its course, but the court system is backed up. And we've done, we served the notice to quit. And then he replied, and then now we've served the sec, second notice. And we feel as though that he, he did bring some property back on, some, some of his personal possessions, possessions back on the property. But it is in, I'm not going to say it's in compliance, but it's really scaled back his operation to what it was before. And our, our opinion is, it'd be great if we, if you did put some caveats or conditions of an approval because ultimately, the town of Berlin would probably rather have fifty or forty-five thousand of industrial space with clean professional tenants than three dilapidated old multifamily buildings. A better tenant on that part, on that building, that would stay in compliance. That would be, you know, everything would have to come by this commission, staff, Maureen. And the process is, is running its course. And I just, we would really appreciate it if you did put some conditions of approval where we don't, why would we need to come back? If you condition that, or our intention is to remove Coast to Coast, and then again, remove that other tenant there that's just played the COVID game for a while. But we, we, we really want to work together, and we just think it, it would be a burden to, to come back and to try to get an approval that you can approve today with those conditions. It's, we've, we, we, I've been working with Maureen and Attorney Capola the whole time. And I know that was Attorney Capola said, you know, get to Phase Two and then show good faith with this commission. And that's where we're at with those, those evictions. So I, in, in closing, I really think we're all on the same page. And by, by restricting me, making us come back, and all it's doing is then harming us. And I don't think we should be harmed. I think what our, our company should, should, you should show good faith like we're showing good faith and work together because the, these people are accomplishing their goals. They smile at me and say, especially the residential tenant, you'll never get rid of me until the governor or the president allows for this to happen. And I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's, it's funny, but it's, it's not so funny. And, and again, this tenant can play the game for six more months. And we, we, we want to get rid of them. We want to build these buildings, and it's foundation season. And it'd be great to, to move concurrently. That's, that's just my take on it. So I appreciate your time.
No, no problem. Thank you for the clarification.
Maureen, you said that you had documentation of Mr. Kokomo's lawsuits and everything, so.
The emails, we had conversations with regard to that that came.
So. So you can confirm? Okay.
I could, I could provide those to you.
Yeah, well, she has, she has copies, so.
I could provide, I can provide all the.
We got that from your lawyer.
Yeah.
Okay, and I guess where I was going with this is you'd have to come back to get approval for Phase Three in the next building?
No, we, we would, we would like to get approval for both phases. If I, if I may, just add on to what Mr. Kokomo was saying, is that if in fact we could obtain approval with, with the appropriate conditions, it would allow Kokomo Brothers to go forward with putting a foundation in for a building, doing a parking lot. It may be just the simple disruption caused by construction activity on the site may be enough to actually spur the tenant to, to leave. And certainly, your safeguard would, would be, I assume, what Maureen's conditions would be, that you wouldn't issue a CO until all the conditions were met. But at least they could proceed with construction. And it would seem, it would seem to me, I know if I was illegally living in a house and I had to work my way around construction equipment just to get in and out of the site, that might be enough to encourage me to give up my homesteading.
I was just thinking that maybe one way to make Commissioner Zigmont and Millard and Nanny feel better would be to break it down into two and three, and have you come back before three. That way, we can make sure that the site is 100% in compliance. And I figure it's going to take at least a good, good while to get Phase Two completed. And in that time, I'd like to imagine that you should have your evictions done.
We, 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 we would, we would agree to that. I mean, there is a, a period of time. So we, the approval process allows us to also start with our financing, right? And so bank financing wants to see that it's approved. So sure, we, and in those next thirty or sixty days, we'd be happy to come back for Phase Three if, if, if those go as, as, as course calls for.
That's my thoughts, if anybody.
Compromise. Um, yes, Maureen. Yes.
I wanted to point that out as well. And while during the discussions, I've taken some notes and wanted to clarify that while I put the conditions on there, you know, so that if you choose to approve, these are the conditions recommended, but certainly the options are out there. But the ones I've identified and listening is deny the property not being in compliance. The applicant provided an extension so that the extension phase remaining, all I believe are familiar, perhaps some of the new members are not, that site plan applications must be approved within sixty-five days of their official date of receipt. But there's an additional sixty-five days built in of extension time. The new members came on, we had that additional ninety days on top of it that they could, that the commission was allowed to impose. The sixty-five days are understood as sixty-five days that the applicant provides. The commission, the commission can't say we're extending. Generally speaking, asked for that. And they've used, they've used thirteen of them to get past the September one date, to be about date on a lease, a lease for the garage tenant. They may have more information, whoever he's actually, he didn't answer before. The third is to approve the conditions as, you know, that they doubt as well as the others you came up with are as Commissioner Rogan stated, the phasing. Those are all several options, ways to go, all different.
Can I ask, in our normal scheduling meetings that we have, you said thirteen days have been taken up already. So we got the remaining days, whatever it is, fifty-two days. What meeting would be within, probably at the end of fifty-two days? Or?
Oh, sorry.
It's probably going to be, it's probably going to be.
You know, I mean, I mean, I mean, if it's, if we can give them an extra thirty days or forty days or whatever to address some issues that we have, and then I can see, you know, more action going. You know, like I said, the project is a nice project. You know, it's, it's nothing but improvement for the area. You know, I just want to see action happening, some action happening for the zoning violations or, or whatever else thing, you know. You know, with the tenant thing. I, I have no idea how, how you do that. You buy them out or what you do. But, but it's just, you know, I, I just haven't seen the action that I wanted to see between the last time they were here and they're here now. You know, and I'm willing to give them more time to do that. That's not a problem. You know, and like you said, and they do have the extra sixty-five days if, if needed. So, I don't know, it's, it's working, working with the client and working with us.
I, I can understand that, but I think the nice thing about the way splitting it up into phases is that it's September, you push it back sixty days. Now you're into November, and you'll be dealing with frost, in which point you will not be able to put foundations in. So it's, be basically pushing it into the spring. So I think if you're happy with the project, and previously, I get that not, not much has happened. We did see a big effort on the part of the applicant to get the property cleaned up. And if it is just a legal snafu due to circumstances outside of, you know, his ability to deal with because of executive orders with evictions. I'm just, I would not be opposed to letting him get that foundation in for Phase Two. So it just doesn't bring the project to a complete halt for the next month or next nine months or so. Because I do agree that this, the three warehouse buildings would be more ideal for Berlin than a bunch of dilapidated old houses.
I think that Mr. Edge, I saw you had raised your hand prior, so I wanted to give you a chance to address the commission, too, what we'll all think about.
Thank you very much. Chris Edge, 240 Kensington Road. I just wanted to mention appreciation for looking at potentially splitting up stages two and three. We're very pleased at the moment with Stage One. The building was put up as a tenanted place. Successful company would love to see second and third buildings go up and definitely appreciate this commission's work. I know it's a challenging situation, taking a property that has had some troubles, especially with tenants outside control of the landlord and a lot of things, but just, we are very happy with Phase One, look forward to Phase Two and Three, and just appreciate this commission working with the applicant.
Okay. I'm going to go back to Mr. Miller, who is online, and I just wanted to give him a chance if he has any follow-up questions, George, or any.
I don't have any follow-ups. I guess my comment would be, I, you know, based on what Maureen has said and Mr. Kokomo's, you know, as long as we have the conditions in there with, with regards to the CO and stuff like that, I, I think they make a lot of sense of what they're saying. So, you know, they're, they're certainly going to be in their best interest to move it forward, so. Yes?
Maureen, I'm sorry, we're having a little trouble with hearing you because you're coming out of my speaker. It's the pleasure of the.
Oh, right.
Do a technical little glitch that I was told with the trick and try to make it come out of the speaker in the room like it's supposed to.
You're learning a lot, aren't you, with this computer?
Lights went out. Everyone go home.
George, can you try to talk for one second?
Sure. What would you like me to say, Maureen?
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations.
All right.
I can hear you now, George.
We can hear you.
All right, thank you. I, I would agree with the comments that, that were made. I think if we put the caveats in there, you know, and the provisions for getting a CO, I think that, that has a lot of bearing, that certainly will drive them in the right direction. And I want to see them to be successful also. So I'm, I'm okay as long as we have those provisions, you know, our, our final decree here.
All right, so you're okay with the Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three concept?
I'm fine. I think they make a lot of, you know, it makes a lot of logical sense of what they're saying. And, and they seem to be very agreeable to, you know, meeting those conditions. So I think everybody's trying to work towards the, the right solution here.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, George. Thanks for your patience. Anyone else? Brian?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Yep. Oh, okay.
Anybody else, comments?
Anyone? Diane? Anything? No, go ahead.
I appreciate the comments that Commissioner Rogan.
Uh, I I appreciate the comments that Commissioner Rogan um has made and um agree with what you're suggesting.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
All right. So I'll make the motion to approve with staff comments and the condition that we split this up into. Phase two and phase three and that the applicant comes back to us before he starts phase three so that we can hopefully see that you are in compliance.
Okay, so.
Can I ask for a clarification on that?
Sure.
Staff comments for no building permits prior to. Uh, you know, rectifying their issues. So you, I'm understanding from what you've said, you'd rather modify that to be a different petition. No C O, no. Like at what point?
I'll say um I'll go with what Mr. Millard was. I was thinking no building permits for phase three, but Mr. Uh, I'd also be willing to side with Mr. Miller and say no C O.
Thank you.
As well.
Yeah, George, did you have anything you wanted to chime in on that or?
No, I'm fine. I'm fine with that.
Okay, all right. So it's almost like you're allowing him to go. We're allowing him to step forward. Um, and to start to get things going for himself, but yet he's going to be mindful of the stipulations that have been laid out. And um obviously meet with you if he has any questions and um make sure he's working with your department, right? So we have the motion and we have it. We're in discussion. I don't know, can Mr. Kokomo still address us or? He seems to have moved to the podium, so I'm.
Probably pause your motion and then.
Sure, I'll pause my motion.
We'll pause the motion. Okay, but okay.
Yeah, your pleasure.
Yes.
Uh, thank you very much to Ms. Chair. I just have a question. In a perfect world, if if both tenants moved out, say in October, is it something that staff could then approve? Or even November?
If, go ahead, Brian.
Thinking if you're in a hundred percent compliance, you could come back before us for this uh for phase three and to get that C O and the building permits for phase three going.
Yep. We will work with you, Mr. Kokomo, as long as we know that the it's going. I know, I know, and we have an element that's on the outside, you know, so. Um, it's controlling a little bit of it. Okay, so.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to state for the record that the only issue I have is um. A question with as far as the legal system, the courts in the state of Connecticut. We just want to make sure that not only this commission doesn't run awry, but um Mr. Kokomo doesn't run awry, you know.
Well.
With, you know. Doing something that, you know, maybe a judge might not look fondly of or God forbid. You know, because this still, I mean, apparently it still has to go through the judicial system and yes, our judicial system is slow. It is. Extremely slow at times, um and I do feel I do understand your pain. But at the same time, uh.
I I.
It can be.
Watching out for the commission to make sure.
Not only the commission, but also the also the goodwill of the town.
Yeah, exactly. And I I think that um I I don't see Mr. Kokomo. Kokomo pulling somebody's roof down over their head. I mean, I'm hoping that's that's the status. I should never come to that. But I'm also hoping that as he starts to move forward because it is a big project and he's it's not like he's gonna put the foundation in tomorrow. There's a lot of work to be done. And hopefully that will um perhaps force a resolution for all you know. But at least he can't be or the town can't be held hostage. I I I don't like that feeling either.
Can I get a clarification in the motion?
Uh, well, he's gonna restate his motion. You want to clarify something? Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Uh, we're going for. Uh, approval for phase two.
Yep.
And uh stipulations of the. Planner.
Yeah.
Be included.
Yep.
Does that mean was it a no C O on the phase two building until compliance? And then phase three will come in separate.
Yes.
I wanted no no C O.
No C O and no building permits for.
Then that's a that's a good uh.
Compromise.
Compromise there.
All right.
Still don't get a C O unless we get some movement.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get give him time to deal with his legal issues with the tenants and get a start.
Okay, so do you want to do the honor of restating the motion if you can?
Sure.
Unless somebody else has any other questions. Okay, let's go.
Other than the other than personally, other than getting make sure everything's done with the uh court system. And the eviction, as far as the eviction process is concerned, um and that goal gets squared away to and my personal brain. As long as that gets squared away, you guys are golden. You know, welcome to Connecticut, you know, welcome to Berlin.
Yeah.
That we did put on um that the order they have right now is that every fifteen days that they report myself um with their lawyer. Or to our office now that we have Carol um that for the action has been taken so that we know that there's a written.
Oh, yeah.
Update every fifteen days and that is part of what we're doing.
I think that that's a good add on. Sure. Yeah, because then you know where what what the steps are.
The town informed us.
Yeah.
So that when the court has.
Yeah.
Even in the delay or not or whatever, whatever actions they've taken, we've been updated and know who's controlled that action.
Sounds good. All right.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Rogan, I'm sorry.
All right, so let's do this. All right, I'll make the motion to approve with staff comments. Couple of conditions, one being that we get the town gets report every fifteen days that knows to know that uh. Everything as far as evictions are being handled in the proper legal manner. Um, and that this is broken down into phase two and phase three. As far as regarding phase two, no C O will be uh. Given until the project is in compliance and no building permits for phase three will be given um well until we are in compliance. Yes, they have to come back for phase.
Okay. And that includes the comments by staff. All right.
Yes.
And any questions or whatever, they should keep in communication with staff. Okay. So that's the motion and do we have a second?
Second by Commissioner Legg Nanny.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McGlinn. I'm sorry. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? None. All right. Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
He's on speaker. You're really on speaker. Thank you, George. Who? I know. It's like it's like talking to God. It's like. All right, I'm having too much fun here. All right, public hearing. Um, this is a proposed amendment by Maureen Juisty, A I C P Acting Town Planner, to amend X B four F of the Berlin zoning regulations regarding the expiration of earth removal permits. Postponed to comply with notice regulations date to be announced. So. Maureen, does that mean that we're postponing this?
Yes.
Oh.
Error in the um notice with the newspaper um timing of that um and we realized we could have ten days prior to this. In order to give due notice.
Okay.
I um the record discussed with Chairman Bailey where with our calendar, what options there were and. People's schedules and determined that was best rather than pull all of you to work to schedule. Um, perhaps a short remote meeting the week of September twentieth. And I have to have my calendar out um and. Notice the public hearing for that. That for that week.
Okay.
The other meetings that are scheduled with the commission this month have particular uh reasons for that. They're dedicated to certain topics, one being the P O C D advisory or the P O C D mini meeting. That is a dedicated meeting only for that topic. The meeting next week with the town council is dedicated.
To the town, yeah.
Location topic and we found a special meeting.
Okay.
We're suggesting. Suggesting Monday of the twentieth.
You're gonna notify with emails on those meetings, will you?
Yeah, I'll send it again. It was in one of the emails. I can't. I'll send it again.
I figured I figured out how how the press and and put it on my calendar now, so.
All right, so we're looking at Monday, the twentieth, and it would be a Zoom meeting?
It would be a Zoom.
Yeah, because you would have to, you would be able to go home or whatever and what what.
What time would it be at?
Yeah, well, this is up for us guys to decide on the time.
It was my mistake. I'm open to whatever time works.
All right, there's everyone's saying seven. How about you guys? Seven, okay? And I'll ask George.
Zoom meeting, you can do it from home.
Well, that's it. Well, yeah.
She could do it from home.
Well, the whole idea is that, you know, it's a it's a regular day. It's a four thirty out for her.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Commissioner Zigma, I think that's the idea.
Yeah, exactly.
You'd schedule at your pleasure, whether it be hybrid or fully remote event.
How do you guys feel? It's up to.
I think it's a full remote thing.
Yeah, because then staff doesn't have to hang around. If she was gonna hang around, we would force that to be at five thirty or something. All right. No, no, no. George, how about you? Are you available on the twentieth of September for a seven o'clock remote meeting?
So. I am not, but just go without me. I'm not available that entire week.
Okay, all righty. So he is excused. Um, all right, thank you, George. So how does that sound for the rest of you? Because it looks like I'll be needing my alternates too. All right, so let's call it for seven o'clock Zoom on the twentieth of September. All right, no problem. No, thank you to the commission for everyone uh letting me know their thoughts. That's great. Now I'll put it in my calendar so I don't double book myself. Zoom. All right, we're almost at the end. And um. Okay. All right, so now under Commissioner, okay, old business is just what we had talked about, so we won't deal with that. Commissioner Business is the discussion of a new tent facade at one zero one one Farmington Avenue. All right, is it? Is it ten eleven Farmington Avenue? Okay, yeah, because it's at eleven oh one and it needs to be ten eleven. All right. So no problem because the gentleman is here and, you know, you're lucky that you didn't have to sit till ten thirty waiting for us. So we really did try to chime you up. All righty, so what do we have here? This new tent facade thing?
My name's Chris Gorski, uh, twelve seven Rich Crummell, Connecticut. Uh, we've been in town since two thousand eight. Uh, we are on three sixty one Yerben Road in Berlin right now. Uh, we uh have insurance and real estate agency right there. That's right next to the vet hospital on Yerben Road. Um, our building was sold, so we figured out that, you know, we still want to stay in town, you know, move to a different location. We end up purchasing that ten eleven Farmington Avenue, so it's gonna be our office. We've been here for thirteen years, planning to stay here for at least another thirteen, if not even more. Trying to make this building look decent. I mean, it's been known as a big red building. Uh, no matter who you talk to, everyone knows what that building is. So we're just trying to uh slowly improve it um as budget allows us to do. Uh, we want to start with, um, and, you know, we here just to kind of run it through you, just to make sure our plan is fitting your agenda, let's say this for that area. So I mean, um, I want to run it through you. We want to, first thing we want to do is we want to get windows and uh we like the look of the black windows. With some trim around it on the outside. Uh, they are about forty days out, so I mean, before, you know, it's some time, but I don't want to. Spend thousands of dollars to get new windows just to find out that I cannot put them in or that it's not to your like, et cetera. So. We're in a process of working with a couple of companies actually just to uh getting us drawings of. Basically pictures of how that building will look probably by the end of uh summer next year. Because we want to do this in a face, you know, one and two, but you know, the first thing for us to do is just literally just put the new window so we can start working renovating it inside as well as outside. So purpose of me being here today is I want to make sure, you know, what we trying to do, it fits your agenda for the area. And, you know, listen to your recommendations and do things right.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we have any questions at this point?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank God.
George, you hear that?
Thank you. And uh black windows, I think, are a great idea. Uh, I saw one building.
I didn't I didn't see one of the pictures.
I mean, we did, there there are some pictures. I mean, that's the window itself. I mean. Personally, it's just because, you know, we're still gonna have probably tenant on the second floor. I mean, that's how it's on. Uh, but our office or our offices will be on the first floor. I mean, the first floor, we want to have, you know, big windows, six by five. We placed those arch windows that are boarded up right now. But, you know, it's arches were in style in the eighties when they renovated and that kind of stuff. Right now, we kind of want to bring it up to twenty first century, so we want to get this, you know, uh, you know, rectangular windows. Um. You know, as I said, black windows, white trim or, you know, off white trim around them. Just make it stand out. I mean, you know, uh, average Joe building, you know, in in town that or whatever it used to be. We kind of want to go a little bit with that kind of design. I mean, again, because of the building the way it is, we cannot really go how, you know, average Joe building is, but you know. Just something bring it to that. And again, I I don't mind coming back for discussions or, you know, when I gonna have uh a couple of weeks.
The white trim, whoops.
Yep.
Just screwed it up. And that one there with the white trim around.
Just because I see that Mr. Edge is here, is this something that's going through the facade application or is this something that's just sheer out of pocket? Only because the location.
This it may go through the facade program.
Okay.
Um, we are currently talking to them about it. Um, the nice thing too is they're potentially looking at doing a stone veneer in the bottom of it as well to break it up, so. We're talking to them about it, but we wanted to make sure that this commission was okay with kind of where they were headed, what they were looking to do. Because whether it's the facade program or not, uh, this commission has oversight of the Farmington Avenue area and wanted to make sure it was in line with what you're.
Okay.
You're thinking and then if it's facade, great, it'll go from us back to you.
Okay.
More importantly was the initial feel because I think it it really breaks up the building right now. It's a big brown blob.
Yeah. So we're looking for the, we're looking for the consensus from the commission then.
Yes.
See what's going on. Um, so how does the commission feel about it? I'm I'm not getting any negative vibes from here.
My my thing is the black windows with white trim is is excellent. Uh, and this drawing right here has a. Like a hardboard or whatever that we uh.
Yeah.
Already bored that that we were were uh uh using in other projects. Uh, I mean, that's that's a total improvement, you know.
I think I believe that anything on that building will be a total improvement.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, but the the property is a good location.
Yeah.
You know, it's just.
Yeah.
I mean, we, and again, don't quote me on colors because this is, you know, not my. I'm here, it's just to kind of show the material, but you know, we trying to split this building, so we will do uh facing Farmington Avenue, the intersection. I mean, that, whatever is the front porch, that's definitely gonna be all stone. You know, big six feet.
Yeah.
Door, black door, you know, with the other door on the side. On this side, which is uh, you know. Again, we waiting for some drawings, you know, like blue blown drawings. That stone may go right to the PVC board that right there or may just go halfway and with the siding, but you know, we want it. The whole side, I mean, the whole building, and again, I will have better pictures. We want to split it up, you know, between the shaker and just the regular siding. We want this to. We cannot make it too contemporary because the building is not the way, but we want to update it. I mean, we want to update the look again. I mean, this is not to be rented to someone else. This is gonna be our office for.
Yep.
Some time and we want to, you know, bring attention to it in a good way.
Yep.
So I mean, you know, this is the material, you know, like that we gonna use, you know, different design of siding and whatever. I mean, you know, eliminate whatever is on the building right now. We do the metalwork, we do the gutters. I mean, there's some stuff already growing in the gutters. You know, we want to bring it up, but you know, I want to make sure that whatever we do is to your like. Just so, you know, spending few thousand dollars on windows, I don't want them sitting in the garage afterwards.
No, 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 no.
That's something that's not to your like.
And I, and I'll just turn to George and I'll ask him if he has any questions at this point, or any comments or concerns.
No, I, I like the pictures. I think it looks great. I think it's keeping with other renovations on there on Farmington Avenue. So I think it'll blend in really nice and help make that area stand out down there with everything else that's going on in that area.
Yeah, yeah, terrific. Thank you, George.
Just my opinion that, you know, we had, you had the vinyl there, the shake and the peaks is
Exactly. That, trust me, I mean.
That, that sets everything off.
Yeah, we want to break this up. I mean.
The, the siding itself, uh, the vinyl siding is, is okay. There's good products out there, vinyl that looks like wood. Uh, but, uh, Ben recommended this, uh,
Hardyboard, you call it? Hardyboard, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Hardy.
Yeah.
Solid stuff.
Yeah, the PVC boards, yeah.
Right. We, 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 uh, been recommending that because it's, it's a they call it Hardyboard because it's a hardier system and it stays longer and then vinyl and stuff like that. So that's, you know, that's what we're leaning to.
Yeah.
You know, but like I said, they make good vinyl products too.
Yeah, we, I mean, as I said, I mean, this is for us, not for tenants or whatever. So, I mean, we making this to make sure it stands out the right way.
So at this point, you just want the blessing of the commission.
I just want to make sure it fits your agenda, you know, like us going, getting black windows that will not upset you, that kind of stuff. So that's, that's really why we here.
That's it.
Okay, I'm going to turn to staff, see if she has any comments.
I just want to comment that I believe the photographs and
Yep.
That's in your packet are a little more clear than the ones that were shown on the screen.
And
Really, I'm telling that for the record because I think everybody's
Yeah.
Here and there's no one extra, but if somebody's watching it later, they'll know that the packet is a little more fine-tuned.
Yes.
Before and after.
And when I get better pictures from the company with the design, I don't mind providing you again.
We hope to see the designs.
Make sure they know, whatever we do, it's fit us to.
If you're looking at the buildings around it, even even the Walgreens across the street with the black fencing around it, you know, the you know, I think that's one thing you said in here, uh, you know. Why don't you stay with that flavor that we see our newer buildings on it?
Yeah.
You know.
Exactly.
Farmington Avenue was, I mean, Berlin was the brick capital of world and Farmington Avenue was brick. Um, that's what we're trying to get away from a little bit, you know.
And we will make sure it looks properly.
Yeah. Well, um, I think that you, I think it's a consensus as a commission to say, you know, go for it. We're very excited for your project. And I'd love to see some more renderings when you get them professionally done so we can see what you have in mind. Um, and, uh, I think working with the economic developer here, Chris Edge, he, um, will, will help you out and make the path a little bit easier.
He's been at big help, so.
Terrific. We're glad to hear.
Work with our staff. It's a welcome project, uh, you know, and, uh, been look, I've been looking at the buildings every time I drive by saying, why doesn't someone take that thing?
I would take it over myself, but I just didn't know what to put in there. So I'm glad that you
I will take, you know, it will be summer when we completely done, but, you know, we want to start, you know, we want to bring our office. I mean, my now is still paying grand and, you know, we own the building and paying up there too. So just trying to get things rolling and, you know, I want to make sure everyone is on the same page.
We will.
Welcome it.
All right. Thank you very much and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye, Chris. And so I think that wraps up our agenda, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Zignat. We have a second by Ms. Jorsy. For the record, it is eight eleven this evening. And also for the record, because I didn't chime in, it was seven oh one when I started, so in case, um, I forgot to make note of that. So good night, George, um, and have a great evening and thanks for hanging in there. And to the rest of the commission, thank you very much for all being here.
Oh, God, God is going to leave now, George and the speakers?
Nah, he's leaving.
All right.
George and the speakers.
Everyone have a great safe holiday weekend.